Yep.
Yep. And thank you.
That's okay.
I'm here.
How's it going?
Great.
Thanks.
So many.
I'll have to go now.
All right.
Twenty seconds.
Choo, choo, choo. You've got a minute to scarf that down.
Yeah.
Okay, my iPhone says it's now 7:30, so I would ask Heather to read the role, please.
Mr. Prethridge.
Here.
Ms. Raghu.
Here.
Mr. Bracken.
Here.
Mr. Ellerby.
Here.
Ms. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Ms. Snably.
Here. At this time, we will do the pledge of allegiance for those who would like to join us. You're welcome to.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Summon.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes or corrections? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The agenda is approved, we'll move to public participation in the first item, which a lot of you will be glad to know, is the first item is the discussion of the Oxford Area Trail Phase Five, and so we will turn that over to staff, and I think Jessica's gonna lead us. So while she's getting ready, I explained it to most people ahead of time, but hold your questions until after the presentation, then we will allow people to make comments for the record. It's not a Q and A, but it's a comment time. You get five minutes, and then we'll move forward with the rest of the agenda.
Thank you. We have with us tonight Mayor Becker, who is designing Phase Five of the Oxford Area Trail, which is scheduled to be constructed in the year 2025. This is a part of the process, a public comment time, and we did one public meeting with the REC Board and Oxford Parks and Oxford Transportation, Parking and Transportation Board, and then this is our second one for this phase of the trail. This alignment was initially introduced in 2007, again confirmed in 2017. It was shared publicly in 2021 when we applied for the grant, and now we're into the nitty gritty of the engineering and design. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the engineers to explain the route, what's going on, and then we'll turn it over for a public comment, and then this will be shared with ODOT as part of our planning process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Snably, and fellow council members. I'm Etta Reed with Mayor Becker, and I do have members of my design team with me, I'll introduce here shortly, but we're happy to be here tonight and kind of just present the Oxford Area Trail Phase Five. We had a great meeting last Monday, amazing attendance, and a lot of feedback from the public, and so we just kind of want to build off of that, and I know a number of you were there that day. How do I get the presentation up there?
I thought we were ready, guys. Sorry about that.
Technology takes its time.
It does.
Yes.
So our design team consists of Mayor Becker, we're doing the land survey and landscape architecture and civil and transportation engineering. We have KZF, who is helping us with the public involvement, as well as the planning components. Stan Tech, who is an environmental, geotechnical, and structural engineering firm, they were designing the bridges for us. And then OR Polen, which you guys have utilized on other portions of the trail, are working with us when it gets to the right-of-way acquisition phase.
How many city staff does it take?
We'll see.
Sorry.
Patrick, just how to be here!
Competent staff knows what they're doing.
And we make sure it's running. There it is, and now we're trying to think, are we connected to the internet? For click share to work, yes. We are on the network.
Back in the day, we used to have big poster boards.
Yeah, I remember those.
They even had as a backup.
Yep, I remember poster boards.
It's much easier when you come to meetings now, you don't have these big win.
Easier when it works.
Please.
Easier when it works.
Exactly. Sometimes the last five days we drop the internet connection.
Oh.
Okay. Weird.
I'm always a little nervous when I see the video up there instead of... Yeah, so we just dropped again.
I mean, Spectrum's been doing...
That's important now.
Oh.
What episode Mark's gonna ratchet this?
Season five.
Season five.
Yeah, we should use the H.
It's HT.
Right. It's like the filibuster episode, except it's supposed to be a good one.
Should be. Where's the project presentation?
It's on the piano.
Okay.
You can just turn it on.
Okay.
Thank you. Our apologies.
These things happen.
But only with an audience. This way, if you're teaching, it's like, okay, doing technical troubleshooting with a group of people watching is not my favorite.
So what's your conclusion?
Pat's been upstairs to turn on the HTMI for the picture.
Ah. Thank you, Pat.
He's back.
It was broadcasting for a second. I'm so sorry.
This is the part where people are watching at home going, oh, is anything gonna happen here?
Would a hotspot help?
Yeah. Why don't we try my computer with...
Oh, there it is!
No, that's it, the connection.
Thank you, Pat.
It still should work. Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Okay. So I just want to go through a brief agenda, what we plan to kind of go through tonight. Essentially, we lost the connection again.
No, no. There we go, it's back.
There we go. So I won't touch any. Okay. So I'll introduce you to the team that's here with me tonight. I've already mentioned who our other team members are. We'll talk about the project goals and vision, take you on a guided tour, talk a little bit about the user experience, some vegetative buffers and filter strips that'll be along the trail, some future educational opportunities that we envision along the trail, as well as what are the next steps moving forward from here, and then I'm gonna ask Jessica to come up and just talk a little bit about safety along the trail. So as I mentioned, I'm Etta Reed with Mayor Becker. I'm the principal in charge of this project, as well as a civil engineer. With me today, I have Chris Trich, who's the project manager, and Eric Anderson with KZF, who helped us with the user, I'm sorry, the public involvement and the planning aspect. So the project goals and vision, from the onset, we really kind of had three goals and envisioned for this project. One is to bridge multiple modes of transportation. With Phase Five, we had the unique opportunity of connecting north to the Butler County Regional Transit Authority multimodal hub, as well as the Amtrak platform. So what that provides us is the opportunity to connect pedestrians, bicyclists, scooters, rail, bus transportation, as well as vehicular transportation. Also, this segment, Phase Five, connects the community to destinations, resources, and each other. With the busing being kind of terminated, or not really terminated, I guess, not going on right now for the high school and the middle school students, it's been canceled at the time being due to budgetary reasons, this segment is very important. What it does, it'll allow the individuals and the residential components and communities on the south side of town connect to the trail, and the students can walk then to the middle school or the high school, should they choose. But also, it allows individuals and residents in the south side of town to connect up to the mile square through the Chestnut Connector to the north. So it will connect the community in multiple ways. And then lastly, it'll make Oxford a regional destination. We've all heard of the Loveland Bike Trail, well, this is the Oxford Bike Trail. So basically, the Oats Trail, as we all know, is gonna put Oxford on the map for more than Miami University. It's gonna be a destination, a place to come where you can take, spend the day, take a walk, and then come in town, shop, and have a bite to eat. As Jessica had given you a little bit of the background at the beginning, this is really the future of the Oxford Area Trail system. This will orient us to where we're talking today. So Phase One, which was Morning Sun Road and the Black Covered Bridge over to the Leonard Howard Park, was constructed a number of years ago, and then Phase Two, we followed up with Phase Two, which went from DeWitt Cabin over to Pepper Park, and then Phase Three and Four are under construction now, which kind of fills in the missing links between One and Two, as well as from Pepper Park over to the high school, and then Phase Four goes from the middle school to the Oxford Community Park. And what Phase Five does is really connects Three and Four together, going from the middle school to the high school, or Oxford Riley Road, over to Miami University's property on the east side of CSX, so it's on the south side of town. And so this was the map, yes, this was the map that we started with when we started to look at Phase Five of the trail. This was the alignment we originally looked at, and that's what we performed our feasibility study on. And this here is really an enlargement of what the Phase Five segment of the Oats Trail consists of. As I mentioned, from the left to the right, we're going from Oxford Riley Road over to the CSX railroad tracks, and then from the south side of Silverleaf Meadows up to the Butler County Regional Transit Authority property in Chestnut Street. So this is really the, this is Phase Five here. So at this time, what we want to do is Eric and Chris are gonna kind of take you on a guided tour through the trail, talk about, you know, why we put the, why we are proposing the trail, and showing it in the locations that we have, what kind of thought process went through that, as well as where some nice trailheads are going to be. And I lost it again. There we go. Perfect. So I'm gonna turn that over to them.
All right. The Phase Five of the trail starts Oxford Riley Road at the west end, goes for about a half mile to the east from there. We have our first trailhead there, which really is, a lot of times people think of parking, there isn't proposed parking with this, or any of the ones that we call trailheads. I like to think of them as kind of a pedestrian gateway. We tried to really tie the trail into the neighborhoods where people would use it and just kind of connect to these streets. Then shortly after that, we have our first bridge right there. And the picture on the left here is pretty much what this entire stretch looks like that's shown there. You have a tree line on the right, you can see some puddles, there'll be some ditches to collect the water, so that it doesn't flood the trail. And then the photo on the right is the stream that we'll be crossing with the first bridge. And Eric's gonna tell us about the trailhead.
Yeah, when, as the trail approaches David Drive, we have a little amenity trailhead space, if you will, here for trail users, and kind of some key aspects of this is a connection to the existing neighborhood sidewalk, so the residents in the area can access the trail. There will be two benches for people to, who are using the trail, maybe need to stop and take a rest while they're going from one destination to the other, or sit and enjoy the environment around them. There also will be a bike rack, informational kiosk, and a dog bag dispenser. Additionally, you'll see in the bottom left-hand image here, that's just an example from another trail, but this is a really neat opportunity to get creative with landscaping, and we've got a kind of a little loop sidewalk around some existing landscaping, so we think this will really be a nice feature that adds to, adds to the project. Additionally, this is a great opportunity to incorporate some educational or informational signage about the property around it, or some of the natural environment.
All right, so after about a half mile along that, we hit the Cobblestone Church property. Now, first thing you probably noticed about Cobblestone Church property is it's a very curvaceous trail route. I'll tell you how we came up with that. We went to talk to the pastors of Cobblestone, and they liked the idea of a trail. They said, if you go out there, you're gonna find our little trail. I expected it to be, you know, a foot or two dirt trail, and we tried not to mess it up too much, maybe create some intersections. But I got out there and I saw this picture that's on the upper right corner there, it's about 15 feet wide, grass trail, so we went back to the pastors and said, well, how about we just pave this? And they said, yeah, that sounds like a great idea. We won't have to mow the grass anymore, so... So that's where that trail shape came from. What I love about this is that it really reduces the environmental impact of this trail. We're gonna have to cut down almost no trees on this entire property. And then, well, after they were nice enough to let us pave their trail, we said, well, would you like a connection to the parking lot? And they said, sure, we'll take it. So we're gonna do a small trailhead at the south end of their parking lot, which goes along there. And Eric will tell you about this trail.
Yeah, this trailhead will have the same features as the previous one, two benches, information kiosk, dog bag dispenser, and informational, or bike rack. There will be a small spur from the trail, you'll see that, the purple line in the image on the left, that kind of extends up to a concrete pad, and that will be kind of in this image on the right. We'll add a curb ramp, we'll get rid of the curb that's there, so that people can access easily from the parking lot.
So moving west from the Cobblestone property, we joined Robert's Drive for just a short period, and there's a couple of pictures. We'll just go along the north edge of Robert's Drive until we get to Kerr Road. And Kerr Road's a pretty good crossing of Robert's Drive, it's only 20 feet wide, and you can see forever in both directions, so there's plenty of visibility for pedestrians. And they, we're also going to install this rapid flashing beacon signs on both sides of the road. I think this is the one up on Phase One, but it'll look very similar. And then we go up after crossing Kerr Road, we turn to the north, and then before we get to Gardenia, we take a 90-degree turn to the east. There, yes. Yeah, that's picture looking west, along the field, where the trail goes, right down the middle of the photo, and then Eric's been working on the treatment that we'll have, so we're not just gonna put a strip of asphalt down there, we're gonna do a little bit of work there.
Yeah, the map image on the left shows this trail to the south of Gardenia Drive as a straight line, but it actually will meander, and if I can change, there we go. All right, so you'll see in this, this image on the screen, this is an aerial view of the proposed trail. It will, it will kind of meander, so it won't just be a straight shot, so there should be some nice experience for the trail users. One thing I wanted to talk about is the buffer here, because we will be, while we're on private property, we will be behind existing residences, so just wanted to talk about the buffer we have incorporated between the existing residences and the bike trail. And so we have a standard 10-foot buffer that will just be vegetated between the backyards and the trail itself. In addition to that, then, we will have a five-foot landscape buffer that will have trees, low grasses, native plantings and landscaping to serve as additional screening. And then you'll get to the trail, where there'll be a three-foot shoulder and the 11-foot multi-use path. As it meanders, the path will go from that 15-foot buffer to approximately 30 feet, just as it kind of zigzags back and forth. So you could have anywhere between 15 and 30 feet of buffer, depending on the specific property. One other thing that I want to note is that the typical backyard in these areas is about 45 to 60 feet deep, so the buffer is gonna be approximately 50% of a typical backyard. So there'll be plenty of room and buffer between the existing residences and the trail itself. Here's just a 3D view to kind of demonstrate, this is drawn to scale, but just to show you in three dimension what I'm talking about. You can see the row of trees along the backyards, and then there'll be plenty of landscaping, grasses, to serve as additional buffer. And then, as the trail connects to Silverleaf, we'll have another trailhead here, again, similar treatment as the last ones, benches, bike racks, informational kiosk. This view, we kind of took some liberty and incorporated some future potential amenities, like a water fountain, but this really shows how the trailhead will provide access to the surrounding neighborhood, and really, we hope create an amenity for, for the community. This is an aerial view of the same, the same location.
All right, so from the Silverhood Trailhead, Silverleaf Trailhead, we move to the east until we get to the railroad. The photo there is approximate location of the crossing. We looked at, we looked at bridge, we looked at tunnel. This seemed to be a good place, because the railroad, as you can see from the photos, is a few feet below the existing ground, so it worked out well, because we have to get up 25 feet in order to get over the railroad. So we're about, got about a six-foot head start here. And then we join Phase Three Trail on the other side of the railroad. Here's a rendering we did, this is all the scale, it's using our design surface, one of our landscape architects put this together. So this would be, this would be the view of the bridge, most people would actually see, this is where you're... This would be from the intersection looking south to the bridge crossing here. So it's the primary view that trail users are gonna have. One thing I want to point out is, I know the first question I was gonna get is, are we gonna have to mow this? We made it pretty steep, so that we reduced the amount of earthwork that would be required to get everybody 25 feet in the air. So our landscape architect's gonna put together a seed mix that will be native perennials that will not need to be mowed, they'll look something like this. And we just got a few views of it. Okay, now we're gonna go back to the last trailhead at Silverleaf, and we're from south to north. So we call this the Chestnut Connector, connects the Phase Five Trail up to Chestnut Street. And we have our second, our third bridge here. The photo in the upper right is a similar type of bridge, the actual crossing location is shown in the lower right. And then after we cross Collins Creek, we enter the landfill area to the north. That's a photo of the landfill area, and if you look right up the middle of the photo, that's pretty much the route. And then this is the new Butler County Regional Transit Authority station, bus and train station, and we'll be going right along the west edge of that until we reach that, the lawn for the Chestnut Fields, where we have one last trailhead.
Again, this trailhead will have the same features as the last, but the really neat thing about this is there's a lot of great mature trees and landscaping as you approach Chestnut Street, so we've designed the trailhead to kind of, to work around those existing landscaping elements, to create a neat kind of circle feature here, but it'll have benches and a bike rack and informational kiosk, just like the others. And top right, or the right image there is an example of the informational kiosk, so there may be, it's to be determined what's on there yet, but there will likely be like a map of the trail system and some information for users. So addition, in addition to kind of the community engagement aspect, we've been working on improving the experience of the users, and so we've outlined the core improvements of the trail, and then we have a lot of plans for potential future opportunities for the, for the city to potentially implement. A big aspect of that could be wayfinding signage, so directional signage that points out key features of the city for people to access. key features of the city for people to access, you know, businesses, restaurants in the community. Another key element is interpretive signage. So there are a lot of grant opportunities out there for educational and informational signage about the community, about the natural features of the community along the trail. So we've identified locations and potential opportunities there as well as benches along the trail for resting, bike racks along the trail, drinking fountains. So there's a lot of opportunity here. I see the informational signage and wayfinding as being one of, one of the biggest to help, as Etta mentioned, kind of bring in full circle the destination aspect so that people can see and understand where other things in the community are located so they can visit your businesses and whatnot, so. And then we kind of already touched on this previously, but I just wanted to reinforce a little bit the landscape buffer and the landscape improvements along the trail. We really want to make sure that we have native plantings, grasses that will really complement the community and add improved aesthetics. So not only the trail users enjoy it, but also all the developments around it. And then again, educational signage opportunities, especially being connected to two schools. There's a lot of opportunity here. There's also a lot of grants out there to help fund and construct educational signage. So a big opportunity there.
And we just kind of want to, we're coming to a close here. And so the next steps, where are we today? So the plans have been submitted to both ODOT and the City of Oxford. They're called Stage Two Plans. Essentially, in the ODOT process, there's a Stage One, which is really your feasibility study. Stage Two, which is like 60, 65% plans. And then Stage Three is your final plans. So at this point, we have plans that are essentially 60 to 65% complete that are currently under review by ODOT, CSX Railroad, and the City of Oxford. We have received comments just last week from the railroad. So we know, you know, we feel good, the bridge is on track. We'll address those comments and get those back in. So we're just waiting any day to get the comments back from ODOT and Oxford. Their, you know, their review period's about up. So once we have that, we'll move right into Final Plans. Environmental permitting has been well underway. We've gotten a lot of feedback on that. We've been working closely with Scott Otto on that. As I mentioned, the railroad coordination. And then lastly, once the plans, once we get this final feedback from the city and ODOT, the final right-of-way plans have been completed. We just need their blessing. And then OR Colon will be contacting the affected property owners to discuss right-of-way and easement acquisition with them individually. And so at this time, I do, would like to turn it over to Jessica to just kind of hit on safety. That was a big topic we heard when we met on Monday and I would like her to touch on that.
One real quick question because it came up at the last public session. Could you review why you're going up Silverleaf instead of behind those properties on Silverleaf?
Absolutely. So we did look at that because if you remember from the original alignment, it was way to the east. And so when we looked at that, there were three really key factors on why going up Silverleaf made more sense. One, obviously, it's a longer route to go from the east back over Collins Creek. Collins Creek is, has floodway on it. You have the landfill to the north and some of you may or may not be aware there's a cover on that which cannot be touched, we cannot touch it. So given the floodway, the location of the landfill cover and other environmental reasons, we really needed to stay as far west to cross Collins Creek. So if we come, you know, way to the east, there we go. So this is the ideal crossing for Collins Creek. That was the most...
Yeah, I'm talking farther down at Gardenia and Silverleaf.
Correct. So this is, this is where we need to cross Collins Creek.
Right.
And so coming way over here would result...
No, I'm talking about right behind, yeah, like just there. Would, is that something that you looked at?
At the end of Gardenia.
To just go to the end of Gardenia instead of through the neighborhood.
Yeah, so you're saying instead of going here, go to this location?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. So we have met with that property owner, Mrs. Osborne, with regards to, again, as we met with some of the others, her willingness to work with us. And given her vision for her property and how she intends to use it, that did not work. Basically, coming up Silverleaf made the most sense for what her vision was and how she intends to use the property. Also, the further east you go, you get into more environmental impacts and a longer trail and it becomes more costly. So there were a number of factors why we chose going up Silverleaf versus to the east.
Thank you.
I don't know what's going on, but... Just briefly, I'll, one of the other big questions that came up at the other public work session was safety. So we thought we'd go ahead and talk about that a bit. So as our trail gets longer, we do recognize that we need to address kind of routine safety. So this next year in our capital improvement budget, we have budgeted for what we call a side-by-side, a fancy gator, but it'll be with the police department. And with that, they will be able to monitor the trail more routinely, more quickly than perhaps bike officers could do now. And so that is our intention for safety. And then I do anticipate that we would coordinate with Talawanda on the use of this trail between the two schools. And so some things to work out, but we have a couple of years to do that. But we do intend to monitor the trail and keep it safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Has there been any safety issues with any other parts of the trail?
We've had one incident on the trail that was a safety concern and it was addressed very quickly and swiftly. But for the most part, we have not had any concerns on the trail.
That's what I thought. My, my experience has been they've been incredibly safe, yeah.
Okay.
I believe, oh, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Scott Otto, who is our city engineer.
Wait, Scott?
Scott has saved the city thousands and thousands of dollars by locally coordinating this entire trail project. It's called a local-led project. Instead of paying someone else to do the coordination for us, Scott's certified and he does it on the city's behalf. And so he spends countless hours helping to look at this trail, plan the trail, work with Bayer Becker, and Scott's been great at doing all the phases of the trail. So thank you to Scott. Questions from you?
So are we ready for public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So this is your opportunity if you have comments. This is not a Q and A, but it is a time for you to make comments on any aspect of the trail that you would like to. And we'll give you five minutes. You don't have to take the full five minutes, but you may if you need to say more. So please come on up, give us your name, where you live, for the record, and then you can have your five minutes. Would anyone like to address this plan? Sure. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you all for allowing it, this to occur. My name's Kathy Loder. I live at 15 Gardenia Drive. And I just have a couple of comments. One is you said that you would meander and it would not be a straight line. I'm asking if we have the property to meander, can we just pull it back and put in a straight line to give us as much buffer as possible? One of my major concerns is the drainage and the significant drainage problem we have in the field to begin with. I know that the trail is going to be up three feet. My concern is the buffer area, that will make it lower. We already have a tremendous drainage problem. So my concern is, will that, will that be taken into account? My other concern is, well, hold on, I've got another one. Oh, my other concern is I understand that there's going to be vegetation and I do want to compliment everyone who has been involved in this. I am blown away by the amount that it is taking to put this together. But if the trail doesn't go until 2025, is there the possibility that the vegetation could start sooner so that it would have a chance to build up? And I will just say that, you know, this is going to end up in somebody's backyard. And I realize that it's in my backyard and that it could have been other things. But anything that we can do, I spent a lot of time in Hilton Head. I do not like sitting outside and having people on their bikes tooling around. So anything that we could do to facilitate the barriers for those residents, I would appreciate that very much and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much for coming. Who else would like to address council? There you are. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I am looking forward to the trail, but I'd like to know, I've heard all kinds of stories and so this cleared up a lot of things. I want to echo Kathy's comments. I would like to see, I'm at 11 Gardenia, so I'm right on the corner. I have the worst drainage problem, I believe, in that whole strip. The water comes up on the house side of my pine trees, which I had to plant to keep them from driving tractors and bulldozers in the field. So I want to know who's going to take care of the drainage problem so that we don't have the flooded, I don't have a flooded yard all the time. Half the time, I can't even mow the back part because it's so wet. And I know it's been addressed before, but not properly. My concern too is privacy, any kind of vandalism. And I had four things. So it's the drainage, the privacy, the vandalism, and I guess the safety. Because I have watched...
Be sure and give us your name.
Oh, I didn't say that?
For the record, no.
Oh, sorry.
You told us you lived at 11, but we appreciate that.
Doesn't everybody know me?
I do.
No, Debbie Vogt. Most people call me Ed, everywhere Debbie, so.
All right, thank you, Debbie.
Yeah, those are the concerns that I have is, you know, when you hear that 30 feet, of course, I would like to be the property owner with the 30 feet versus the 10 feet. So, and I want to know how too. Will that affect my pine trees that are kind of right on the edge? They were planted inside the property line, but they've grown quite substantially.
Okay.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Debbie.
And I look forward to the trail and the new comments.
All right. Anyone else?
My name is Jeff Winnick. I live at 21 Gardenia Drive. So this will be in my backyard as well. As to the safety factor, I am concerned as I have a daughter that sits out back and does her homework. They say there's only been one issue on the trail, but there has been vandalism down at Pepper Park and the bridges have been vandalized. So I have a concern there. And I don't understand why we can't move it a little farther south to give more of a buffer zone as this will be a highway between the high school and the middle school and idle kids can do some fun things. So I just have a few concerns about that. They say there's no, will be no parking for a trailhead, but I will guarantee you there'll be a lot of parking on our street. So it's just a few concerns. Along that, I submitted a letter this morning along these lines. Just wanted to make the record clear.
Thank you. We appreciate the letters as well as your coming here tonight. Now...
Hi, everyone. I'm Holly Larson. I live at 1324 Dana. And I couldn't be more excited for the trail. So I wanted to express my enthusiasm for it coming. I can't get here soon enough as far as I'm concerned. I grew up in Oxford and remember packing up the minivan with my three siblings and my parents and three bicycles on the front and three bicycles on the back to go to Whitewater, Miami-Whitewater. And so the fact that now we have something like this growing in our own community is wonderful. I, my partner and our toddler, almost two-year-old son, use the trail often. And as anybody who's tried to get an unwilling toddler into a car seat and they turn into a wildebeest, I'm very excited that we can use the trail without having to get into the car seat. I'm a dietitian by training and I know that kids who can safely walk and bike to school have healthier brains and healthier bodies. So I'm really excited that my son can use this trail to get safely to school. My mom has MS and uses an electric wheelchair and we use the trail often. When our siblings come back to visit, we always go on the trail. As a homeowner, I'm excited for the potential increase in my home value being now close to the trail. And in typical mother fashion, I'm also excited for myself, thinking of myself last. I like to walk, bike, and rollerblade. And our poor neglected Bernardoodle, now that we have a toddler, is very neglected. He will be excited for more walks on the trail too. So thank you for all of the hard work that has happened. We're very excited for the trail and wanted to put that officially on the record.
Super, thank you very much. Appreciate your coming. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for coming.
Hi, Tomoko Brown. I live on 100 Prevalent Drive. I just have a few questions. So are there any future maintenance budget for this trail? Are there any bathroom access? I know that they're not Howard Park, there's a porta potty there. There's a Pepper Park, there's a bathroom facility, but there doesn't seem to be a place to put the bathroom facility. There's a place to dispose a doggy poo, but not for humans. And I was thinking, I was looking through the slides and I was thinking, is there any way for the residents to request fencing? City can split the cost or build it for the backyards? Also, do we have good cell phone signal in that area? I don't have good signal, cell phone, cell phone reception in my driveway. I just want to make sure of the safety reasons. So that, those are my questions. Thank you.
Good question. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Wendy DuVall, 5942 Booth Road. And I just wanted to come and say thank you for, you know, the, a large part of the sections can be adjacent to our property. And I just wanted to say I really appreciate the time and the thought that people have put into thinking about, you know, how it's going to affect the people who live along the trails. You know, I am an avid user of the trails myself and, you know, I, I'm sort of like putting my money where my mouth is in terms of like, it will be in my backyard and, you know, we're going to deal with the pros and the cons of that. But I think it's, it's, it's a great move for Oxford and just sort of the betterment of our community. So thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else? I want to thank all of you for coming and giving your feedback. And thank all of the people who wrote in. If you still think of other things and you want to communicate with council, you can still send in written comments to council and we do read those. So thank you very much. Now, council, do you have questions or comments?
No, wait, were you, were you moving on the next thing? Yeah, can I just echo because there, this is one of these ideas that's been talked about and because I'm in a Thanksgiving spirit, I'm going to try to list off the various people. I mean, the people envisioned the Oxford area trail 20 years ago and helped put that dotted line on the map and then put in our comprehensive plan in 2008 to, you know, to the voters who approved the levy, you know, this is, the match comes from our public tax dollars. And those are real dollars to people, but this is what we promised. And, you know, I want to say thank you to OKI who is providing, the federal taxpayers are helping pay for this. You know, I want to thank the property owners who live adjacent to the trail for working with the city and being understanding and trying to open your mind to the change. I want to particularly thank the landowners. These are not insignificant easements. So these will attack, these will impact, but we have willing property owners who are going to enable us to make this connection and I'm super grateful for that. To all the team, Bayer Becker, StanTech, RC, KZF, Scott Otto, you know. And so what I'm really hoping is it's going to be a change, but there're going to be benefits to this. And I think it's, it's, it's easier sometimes to recognize what's going to be different and difficult but then the benefits. And I think being adjacent to the trail, I hope that people see that as the trade-off is really going to be worthwhile. I would say to those people who are enjoying a cornfield in their backyard now to think that in 20 years, that cornfield may be a development, you know. And so you may have more buffer from an adjacent development than most of us have. Most of us, our backyards look directly into someone else's backyard. And so, you know, these are some changes. I hope that people feel happy about it, but in the process... But in the process, I really want to thank staff for working with individuals to see how, in the details of the planting, to just that the property owners are happy with that. One little thing is that, and this is just from me, from a planner's point of view, we're utilizing these stub streets for these trailheads. But we put stub streets in there for a particular reason, to provide connectivity to potential future subdivision. So, that's my technical question is, I, I don't want us to rip these things up in 10 or 15 years. So, what's the, we're, we're putting them in a number, I'm counting three stub streets that we have trailheads. So, what happens if there's future development at those locations? Have we thought that through?
I mean, the trailheads, while they have furniture, you know, benches and garbage cans and all those good things and kiosks, there's not going to be any real structures. The amount of pavement is, I would consider minimal. I mean, I'm like you, I hate to put anything in and tear it out. I know some of the property owners have some plans or no plans. I mean, they're all varied on what they intend to do. What we were really focusing on was trying to take those neighborhoods and bring them, bring the trail to them and make those connections. So, I guess in my thought, putting on my side when I work with my development clients, would be that if one of them were to want to develop a property adjacent to one of those stubs, is that I would like to think that they would take that trailhead, understand the value of it and incorporate it into the open space. So, you would still have the vehicular connection, but maybe you take and, like at the end of David Drive and you take the sidewalk that's there on David Drive now and you take it over and you put the trailhead maybe off to the side instead of at the end of the stub street. So, that, you could have the vehicular connectivity. I think there's ways you can work with it. But at this time, the, the property owners, Mr. Karunga and the EVR property, they don't have intentions of doing anything immediately. And so, we really felt that it was better to, let's get the community tied to that trail versus, you know, trying to plan for a stub in the future.
Okay, well, that's as long as the property owners. And the last thing, and I've shared this multiple times, I, I want to make sure we get the connection to South Main right because I think that's the way a lot of people will be approaching the trail. And I think, I think there's some ways that this could be better and I understand the difficulty, but I've shared that. By email.
Right, and we had that conversation and I actually thought, we thought a lot more our team has about that, David. And I think with some wayfinding and some things that are going on at BCRTA, we're not that far apart. So, I think you will get to where you want to be really easily.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else of questions?
Yep. I got to speak for all of the other people in that neighborhood that did not come here today because there was significant discussion regarding the edit that appeared that you also noticed regarding the stub street that I would say arguably is going to be one of the most used because it's the closest to that multimodal hub. It was, at the beginning, adjacent to the tree line and now it's showing up on the stub streets of Silverleaf and I forget the other one, it's on the other side of where the trailhead was going to start. But I'm, I'm curious as to why the developers thought that running something through a neighborhood wasn't going to run into the exact same problem that we had with the Western Knolls. And there are other people that are in our neighborhood that are willing to, I guess you would say, go through legal action if something goes in the front yard versus the backyard. Now, you've heard several people say, we don't have a problem with having a trail through the backyard, but we do have a problem with the trail in the front yard, much like the individuals that are over in the Western Knolls and they came with much more force. They are entrusting me to communicate that.
You mean Country Club?
Yes, sorry, Country Club. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Wrong side, but yes, you understand the whole concept.
I do know exactly what you're talking about.
They are entrusting me to communicate that regarding this particular process because everybody was making the assumption that on that initial outlay, which was riding the tree line, and now that it has the zigzag switch that goes up through Silverleaf, there are some serious concerns. Those people aren't here tonight. They've asked me to communicate those. You've also heard some of my other neighbors say that they are much more comfortable with the maximum ease or maximum space instead of the meandering thing. So, they want the maximum 30-foot or a provision for security fencing or some sort of other natural barrier that protects their backyards. Me personally, since that would be coming across my front yard, I was also somewhat surprised that it did change now. And I was very curious about other safety concerns regarding, when you were talking about provisions for backyard safety, what are the provisions for front yard safety and trailhead safety, especially when it's going to be that close to the multimodal hub? Also, when in the original plans, it was against the tree line, it was an assumption that that had been worked out with the property owner, that that tree line would be where the right of way went and the attachment would be at that perpendicular intersection and then cross, I guess it would be east-west at that point. So, I, I, I just have, have to say that the statement is, it would be much more well-received if it was against the tree line than not. And if there were provisions for those people that have the trail adjacent to their backyard because I believe this is going to be the first one that actually gets implemented versus having a two-year hiatus, that you do that with some deference to the owners of the property that it's going behind.
Okay, thanks, Glenn.
I just had a bridge, like nitty-gritty question for the railroad bridge. On the picture, it didn't look like there was any kind of, it looked like kind of just a standard, like the crossing over by DeWitt Cabin Parking Lot. Because it's going over a railroad track, will it have kind of the overhead barrier or will there be some kind of protective barrier to keep people safe?
Correct. One of the comments from CSX was that it had to be fully, basically fully enclosed.
Got it, perfect, thank you.
So, it'll have a top.
Great.
Okay. So, I would just make one comment on it. And as somebody who uses the trail a lot, I'm really excited about it. I'm excited about the section that's going to go down 732. It'll provide more access for more people. So, I'm, I'm a big proponent of, of the trail generally. The two things that I'm, I have concerns about, one Glenn just talked about and it's what I brought up. And I think if it were behind those houses to the east of where it's currently planned to go down Silverleaf, I think that would be better and I don't think it would be that much longer. So, I think that that should be looked at to see whether that's possible or not. The other thing is on David Drive on the stub, we had Mr. Redpath talk about the fact that he needs to have access for his farm equipment to get in to that farmland that's back there. And I want to make sure that he has that access. So, I hope that the planners will look at that and see how that can be done so that when he brings his equipment and it doesn't mow down all the amenities that we've, we've got. So, let's not forget about that. And I see some nods, so I, I think that those will be. But those are the, to me, those are the two sticking points and they are at the stubs. And so, I was appreciated your answer to David's question. I also had that question, so, okay.
Can I just build on one thing before we leave it? The engineering study just didn't look at the city of Oxford property at all, did it? You know, in terms of providing north-south connectivity, like you're looking east of Gardena, but then the city owns land adjacent to that. Did we look at something that would have connected to the trail without having to go through Silverleaf at all?
Yeah, yes, we did. That, that property that's owned by the city is really kind of the service yard. So, Mike's staff, they keep catch basins, miscellaneous public works materials back there. There's also a compost pile. It's just really not an ideal place to walk.
But even the entirety of the site?
You're talking about the east side of?
The far east.
Of the landfill, but.
Yeah, well, there, yeah, so it's Gardena's here and then the property and then the city owns further to the east. And I just didn't know whether it was, yeah, there's, I, I just, I just want to make sure that it had been evaluated.
And also just the amount of larger vehicles, from a safety perspective.
So, we've, we've tried to discourage the use of that area. We run lots of heavy equipment there, including our tuck grinder, which demands a 600-foot safety radius. So, there's just not enough room to invite the public and allow us to do our jobs back there. If we did move the trail there, we're going to have significant costs to relocate that entire operation. It's a Ohio EPA permitted compost facility and there would be a lot of costs to move elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody, for your comments and feedback. Jessica, is that the end of our, okay, thank you. We'll now move to other public comments. We haven't even gotten to our agenda yet for most of the things we're going to talk about. But we do make time for public comments on things that are not on tonight's agenda or they may be on the consent agenda. And so, if you have comments and you would like to address them to council, this would be the time and the same thing applies. Give us your name and where you live and then we'll give you five minutes. Welcome back.
Hi, I'm Kathy Titus and I live at 101 Charleston Drive. And I love the Oxford Bike Trail. I would love to have the Oxford Bike Trail in my backyard. I would love that. Instead, the city's purchased three, three lots on Chestnut Street. And I'm here to voice my concerns about the rezoning of those lots and what the city wants to build on those lots. So, my personal concerns, I'm just speaking for myself, no one else. Right now, the city's proposed, has sent out RFPs and I believe those were due back on November 17th. So, in the process of reviewing those, our, our, the proposals from the developers, I would like you to take into consideration my concerns. First one is safety. The high-density affordable housing complex located, that city wants to locate on College Corne, oh, that is currently located on College Corner Pike in Oxford, experiences a high amount of drug-related activity and crime. Currently, our neighborhood is very safe. Most of our residents are senior citizens and single adult females. Many of my neighbors and I are afraid the crime in our neighborhood will become a problem. Second thing I have, a concern I have is the devaluation of my property. I've been told by a full-time local realtor that indeed my, my property, if, if higher density affordable housing is, is developed in my backyard, that I will have a direct view of that, that the value of my property will be decreased. The third concern I have is noise. Cars, dumpsters, and 30 to perhaps 100 people moving into less than three-acre complex will destroy the quiet atmosphere that our neighborhood currently enjoys. So, I asked the members of city council and city staff to require that noise mitigation fencing be built between the existing housing and the proposed development that will help offset the increase in noise that comes with a 10 to 20-fold increase in population. I'm also concerned about environmental damage. Bull Run Creek runs directly behind the Chestnut Street properties. The creek banks that are, that border the creek have serious erosion problem. And downstream, there's serious erosion problems. So, the addition of high-density housing units will decrease the amount of permeable surface area. And I'm concerned that the water runoff will exacerbate the erosion of the Bull Run Creeks. Excuse me. So, I asked the members of city council and the city staff to allow community input in choosing the developer and design for the proposed Chestnut Street development. I believe that by allowing our community to help guide the details of the development to ensure that it will be designed sensitively and appropriately to fit into our neighborhood and not negatively affect the character instability of our homes. So, I would love to have the bike trail and, and the view of my backyard because right now, my backyard, I face the backs of the three, those three properties. And so, that will be gone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank you last, for your encouraging comments from last week and for the help from Sam in just navigating the RFP process. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else that'd like to address council? Go ahead, Ann.
Ann Fuhrer, I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knolls. I attended the work session on the ARPA funds this evening and I appreciate that those sessions are open to the public. You do need to change your agenda on your website though because you use the same statement there about public comments that you use for the regular meeting and there's no opportunity for public comments during the work session, which is fine, but it sets up unrealistic expectations for those of us attending. I'd like to make several comments expressing my perspective on comments made during the work session and also end by talking about two comments that were made during your November 7th council meeting. I'd like to echo Jessica. And Jessica, I'm glad you, from the work session, I'm glad you believe that TOPPS and FRC are on track, working with a local attorney to merge and with an architect to design a building that is possible, if not ideal, given the previous vision. I share that perspective, but cautiously because those agencies are struggling. The TOPPS staff and board had a very different vision than is going to eventuate. And Mayor Snively, I too am disappointed that the original vision won't be realized. But that said, I encourage empathy for social service agencies. I can't tell you what kind of impact COVID had on the agencies. The census of TOPPS has increased 40% in the last two years and it's not going down. And it was one thing for me to successfully write a grant to get $90,000 in ARPA funds for a mobile pantry van and we made good use of that and gone out to the townships to increase our outreach. It's a very different thing to plan for $1.5 million for a new building. I'm one of the four members of the planning group of OSH. A number of council members have mentioned OSH, Oxford Area Solutions for Housing, a new coalition. We meet monthly, we've been meeting monthly for the last seven months or so. And a year ago, we talked with Jessica about the possibility of faith communities taking on some responsibility with city funds for a cold shelter. And at that point, faith communities were not ready to do that. I think we've become more ready as our coalition has built. And yet, we are struggling to find an agency, as you know. I think it may involve going to perhaps the YWCA or community development professionals or family promise, taking advantage of the greater resources that are in Hamilton. But I encourage empathy because we are building a coalition. Cities that successfully address the needs of unhoused people, increase the affordable housing stock and you're doing a wonderful job of doing that. And so, that is essential. You acknowledge the existence of a need and OSH received $4,800 in grant support from the McCullough Hyde Foundation and from the Masonic Foundation to do our own point-in-time count in December and to provide additional resources to the special needs of unhoused people served by TOPPS and FRC. The elephant in the room is whether or not the city should support social service agencies and to what extent the city budget should and how you should partner with social service agencies. That needs to be directly addressed and I support two comments that were made during your November 7th meeting. Councilor Prithard, you talked about the importance of planning and not planning at the last moment and, you know, receiving a request and I see it's on the agenda for tonight, support for thread up Oxford. That's great, but that requires some planning and our coalition would, would like to do that planning with you. Disparate populations, yeah, I'm on my last one. I'm going to, yes. And disparate populations have particular needs and the city has to decide, do you want to support social service agencies and truly vulnerable members of the community or not? You don't agree on that. I get it. It's complex. And then Vice Mayor Ragoo, you made the comment about participatory budgeting. I'd like to talk more with you about that and what that would look like. So, thank you for your continuing creativity and dedication and as always, I'm saying there's more to do.
You used exactly five minutes. Good job. Good job. Would anyone else like to address council? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move then to the --
We had a one-minute speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you.
Sorry. I was in the back. Hey, there, everyone. I'm New. My name is Jessica Lupidi. I live at 6104 Fairfield. I have three young children and a mother of three. I'm a nurse by training and stay-at-home with my kids right now, and my husband is an engineer. We came here because we fell in love with Oxford. We fell in love with the parks and the library and the Aquatic Center, just the arts and the safety of being able to walk our kids to Kroger and to TJ Maxx and different things in the library. So we really love our little town. And I'm here today to talk about some concerns that I had about the push for affordable housing. When we moved here before we closed, I did a research on sexual predators in my area, because I'm a really protective mom, and I just wanted to know what was going on around me. And I was really surprised to find that there were seven sexual predators within one mile of my house. Where I came from, there was zero. And I kind of started digging a little deeper. I immediately called the police department and spoke with a police officer. I noticed that three sexual predators, roughly 40% of them, all had the same address. And after talking with the police officer, he said, you know, "Yeah, we're frequently there. It's, you know, off of College Corner Pike, and it's actually one of the affordable housing facilities." And that's right next to where my kids go to school. And obviously, I was really concerned. But after he, you know, told me it's a pretty safe area, it should be okay, people from Oxford know not to go back there, just kind of stay away. So when I started hearing about the push for affordable housing, I obviously got a little bit more concerned, because here we have it in our own backyard, a correlation between a criminal record and unsafe person, and we have kids walking to school past that area every day. So I want to take a closer, what I'm here for is I want to take a closer look at our current affordable housing. If we're projecting that we're going to build a nice new facility, and that's going to solve the problem of them being unsafe, and it's going to be managed differently, and it's going to be better this time, why don't we have control over that one? Is it because we give out a 20-year lease, and there's no reason for them to really need to check back in? It's up to the management property at that point. If they take on people with history of being sex offenders, living one right next to the other, three in a row, what's to say that another property wouldn't fall to the same thing? Is there something that we can do to clean up and focus on those and get those up and running at full capacity well and efficiently and safely for those people that live there and for the community that lives there? I have multiple questions that I would love to have answered maybe at the next council meeting, if you guys would be willing to address those and make them part of the formal agenda. I would love to hear answers, get more feedback, and be able to be more heard. And I'll go through that list right now. So there's a phenomenal pandemic, basically, a crisis all over the nation right now. And as the police said, there's more trouble with drugs and overdose in those areas. If we increase it, I think I read online, it was like by 355 more units by 2025. If we make this big push, you know, how are we going to protect our kids in school and our community members from the exposure to that? I would love if the police chief would have time to kindly come and speak to us about their calls for service, their facilities at the affordable housing units versus the other facilities in the area, how that, you know, what it's for, what the number is, that stuff. Also, I'd like to know, are all of our affordable housing currently full, packed? Do they have demand? What is it? And how is it being funded? Is it part of our budget? Are the taxpayers paying for it? And are we going to be employing new people, because it's going to be quite a task to try and get all of this built and done in this period of time? And lastly, I just want to say, you know, I know there's a lot of vulnerable people. I'm a mom, stay-at-home with my kids, women, young college students, elderly, and children walking to school by themselves. I want them to feel safe and continue to feel safe in our community, so I don't have to worry about my kids playing in the backyard and things like that. I want to feel like I'm in a good community and that we, that you support and care about that as well. So thank you so much for letting me say those concerns, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone else? Don't want to miss anybody. Okay. Not seeing any. We will move then to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Consent agenda is approved. We'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution approving the contract between the City of Oxford, Ohio, and the Oxford Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 5272 and authorizing the city manager to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments you want to make, though?
Yeah. So the city reached a tentative three-year agreement with the full-time firefighter EMS division employees. The current agreement expires December 31st, 2023. The tentative agreement, as you know, was reviewed with City Council in executive session before the November 7th, 2023 council meeting. So you have on the agenda tonight this resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a new three-year agreement. And the new agreement includes wage increases of 4.5% in 2024, plus a wage adjustment of $4,500, which is a total wage increase of 10.3%. 4.5% in 2025 and 3% in 2026. It also includes increased personnel time, the addition of longevity, which was not in the last contract, and some other items as well. So we would recommend that you approve this resolution so that we can get a new agreement signed. And of course, since we're getting, assuming you pass this tonight, getting it adopted before the end of the year, it does not include any retroactivity as many of our other contracts have in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay. Counselors, any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to the second one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a change of scope to the Butler County Board of Commissioners for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program Year Application.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica.
Good evening. There will be two parts to this legislation. So when we applied to the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, we had intended to acquire property, and we had applied a while ago for this intention, and they told me recently it was denied. And we went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, and I've just decided at this point it's not worth the fight. And we, I recommend that we pivot this to another public facility, which is a playground in Mary Day Park. And then instead, later, we'll have an ordinance to pivot away from the Community Development Block Grant to our ARPA dollars to finalize the purchase of 601 West Chestnut.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Counselors, have any questions or comments?
I like the nimbleness, and I'm glad that when we talked about Mary Day, like, oh, we're not going to rezone this, because there should be an improvement to the playground, that those weren't just empty words, that staff heard that and thought about how to make that happen.
Yeah.
And I really appreciate it, because it would have been easy for us to say, yeah, in the future, but we could actually --
Let's actually do it.
So thank you.
And I also appreciate the idea of following up on your point of improving an area that low-income families need to take advantage of and deserve to have. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to the third.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to submit eligible projects to the Butler County Board of Commissioners for the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program Year Application.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and this must be the second half.
Well, actually, the second half's an ordinance. This is the 2024 Community Development Block Grant application, and we decided to apply for a public restroom. So the public restroom has been on the kind of the wish list for a long time, and both Enjoy Oxford and The Chamber have committed matching funds to help us construct this facility. And so we are recommending that we apply for the Community Development Block Grant for construction of a public restroom in the Uptown Park area.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion by the public? Okay. Thank you for coming anyway on that, and we will move to council discussion. Any questions?
I'd love to see things that have been talked about for years and years and years.
Get done.
Get closer. It'd be really nice.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Resolution's adopted, and we'll move to the fourth.
A resolution authorizing the donation of $5,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Thread Up Oxford.
Okay. Jessica?
Yes, this is a responsive council request.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Now you can go, Jessica.
We're both ready to move on.
I know. We're ready.
So this is a request from council at our last work session, so we are bringing it forward to you. We recommend the amount of $5,000 for the assistance to Thread Up Oxford.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. We did discuss it last time with Thread Up. Does anybody have any further questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. And the resolution's adopted. We'll move to first reading ordinances for the public's information. We don't have a motion for first reading, but we listen to them. We take questions and comments, and then they'll come up at our next meeting for a vote. So you may read the first one.
An ordinance to repeal the use of $97,750 of the Community Development Block Grant Funds to purchase 601 West Chestnut Street and replace with the use of $97,750 of American Rescue Plan Funds to purchase 601 West Chestnut Street.
Okay. And Jessica?
This is part two of the earlier resolution. So it is our recommendation to amend this ordinance to allow us to purchase this property and use American Rescue Plan dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay. Council have questions, concerns? Okay. Thank you. This will come up at our next meeting. You can read the second.
An ordinance establishing the zoning designation as general business district for 6.72 acres of newly annexed territory addressed as 525 North Campus Avenue and 5186 Morning Sun Road.
Okay. And Sam?
Thank you. Yes. Good evening. This is the hotel that we've talked about over the several, past several months in one form or another, from the conditional use to annexation to future land use. So along the northern perimeter of the city, there was not a annexation agreement, which is what the ordinance calls for. If there's an annexation agreement, then that's what sets the zoning. So this legislation just takes the place of that to set the zoning as general business, which is the zoning that the planning commission reviewed it as if it would be. So this, if this is not done, it would be township zoning, which is B3. And so being that it will be in the City of Oxford, we want to avoid that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay. Thank you. Counselors, have any questions? We kind of knew this one was coming.
Can I ask a procedural question? Did the planning commission make a recommendation regarding? There's been so much movement on this that I've lost track. Did we in the planning commission make a recommendation on zoning for this?
No.
Would that typically be the process?
Not for annexed property. No, typically not. It's usually discussed at council, and then future land use at planning commission, which is a new step.
Okay. So, okay, because I think in the past, sometimes we've had annexations in which there's that that the development agreement says that, like, zoning will be considered by the planning. I mean, is there a reason why we don't do the step of the planning commission? I mean, I, yeah, is, yeah, it's a reason why the planning --
It's not required, but in this case, it'd been discussed by the planning commission already three times previously. The zoning of general business was not discussed specifically as an action, but it was discussed surrounding the conditional use permit twice, then also with future land use and annexation. So it was discussed four times previously.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem. I think that was what the intention was. I just, just trying to understand our procedure. Thank you.
You're right. It didn't, there was no --
So I wasn't, I hadn't forgotten something that had happened.
That's a good catch.
It just didn't happen. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just going to say, for those who don't follow all this, is there any reason to worry about this and misuse of the property for the public's sake?
Could you restate that again? I'm sorry.
Is there any concern around this for misuse of what the property is intended for?
Oh, sure. So if the hotel was not being developed, then yes. I think a general business district in this location adjacent to residential on three sides, two sides, could be problematic. But there is some, I think, some assurance that since it's a hotel that's being developed and the building permits under review, that that would be, give some comfort to the surrounding property owners. It may not be that way forever, but general business allows a wide range of uses, which could be a nuisance adjacent to residential. But in this case, the hotel went through a very thorough conditional use review process. That would be the only thing I could think of is the long-term future.
But we're pretty confident in the direction this is going.
Yes.
And we did actually condition the water and sewer. I think we'd conditioned the water connection on the development as described in the proposal. So there was, you know, we actually, it could get water if it weren't a hotel, or they'd have to come back to us. So we've got more assurance than typical --
There is, there is a little bit there.
Yeah, than other, it's not, yeah, it's just not open to GB, but it's a good question.
That's a good question.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right. We'll move to second reading. You can read the first one.
An ordinance by Oxford City Council amending Chapter 182 Income Tax effective January 1st, 2016 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Oxford, Ohio.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded.
So just briefly, there's no changes from the previous reading of the ordinance, but as we know, these are required changes in our municipal income tax ordinance through the state-enabling legislation. It was part of the budget bill. It was put in there. And the main change is that citizens younger than 18 years will not have to pay the income tax. And these changes will be effective. There's some other changes. They'll be effective January 1st, 2024.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And counselors? I see nothing. You make all the roll.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pether?
Yes.
Ms. Snidely?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. We'll move to number two.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign an amendment to the ground lease between the City of Oxford, Ohio, and the Center for Community Revitalization of approximately 2.1 acres of city-owned land located at 5234 Hester Road for the Cottage Community Project.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been seconded. Thank you very much. And Doug?
Yeah. So as you know, the city leased this property to the Center for Community Revitalization for our Cottage Community Project, and they've requested to place a lien on the improvements to be constructed. lien on the improvements to be constructed. This excludes the land, which the city still owns, of course, since we're leasing it. And they also requested some additional time to build the project. And so we're recommending that council pass this ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign this amendment to the ground lease between the City of Oxford.
What is the current estimated time that they will begin this project?
Well-
People always want to know.
Okay, well, the current lease basically required them to get started by December 31st, 2023, and this extends it out to 2025. They've helped me out, Sam.
The building permits are under review right now.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
All right, so they are moving on it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors have any questions or comments?
One, I will just say, I think a lot of times folks will say like, oh, you wouldn't have this in your backyard, or with folks on council. This is in my community, and you know, I work from home by myself most of the day, and I am excited to have the opportunity to welcome more folks into my community. I have a lot of confidence in the organization that we've partnered with to run this community. There's been a lot of conversation with a lot of community input on this community as well. So just, you know, I think that this could end up being a really excellent example of what it looks like to welcome those who can't, you know, afford maybe a more standard home or don't have the ability to purchase a more standard home into our communities in a way that's safe and respects those who already live there. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do we think they'll need the two years? I guess, I don't know if we can say anything to that, but I hope not, because I want to see this move forward.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see it. I think we've been talking about it for at least two years, so-
I feel like it has been two.
All right. You ready? All those, yeah, call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prether?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Ms. Snively?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number three.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision application and plat for Owl's Landing Block C, being a replat of Lot 4134 within Owl's Landing Block B with conditions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you very much. And we've got Sam back again.
No changes since the first reading. It's the finishing out of Owl's Landing, which is adjacent to the community park.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors? Nothing? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prether?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number four, and you have a chance.
An ordinance repealing Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1139, entitled Variances, and adopting new Oxford Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1139, entitled Variances for the Purpose of Extending the Time That An Approved Zoning Variance is Valid.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
No changes since the first reading, and I'll say the BZA will appreciate this. They have an agenda item on this very topic a week from today, so.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Okay, we'll have discussion by council. Any questions or comments? We covered it last time, I think, so you can call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prether?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Snively?
Yes, the ordinance is adopted. You get a chance, we'll go to number five.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi?
Good evening. There was one change, the 15,000 additional funding has been included for the urban forestry within the general fund, so therefore there is a $15,000 increase in the appropriation for the general fund, and that's the only change that we had tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? Okay, thank you. Counselors, any questions or comments? I know that it looks a little confusing when you just glance at this, but we're doing current expenses, then we'll do budgeted advances, then we do budgeted transfers, and then we do fees and charges, so that's how everything is divided up this time. So this is for current expenses, or this is for budgeted advances? Any further discussion? You can call the roll.
Is this as budgeted advances or appropriations?
This is budgeted appropriations.
Okay.
So before we do that, I mean, I just want to follow through the question, which is, we've been talking, we've been talking about the construction of the Oxford Area Trail, whatever phase it's going to be, along 732, which will move people towards the middle school, but, but then introduces a trail crossing at Dana Drive and 732 without any changes to what's currently out there, which is the rapid flash beacons, which might be appropriate on Care Road with a speed limit of 25. I think there's consensus that we're not, we don't, I assume consensus among council that that may not be safe enough for the volume of kids that will be driving across there through the trail construction in the dark. So, you know, I mean, I propose something like a rapid, the hybrid pedestrian beacon. I don't know what the right solution is. Staff has said, we're going to look at something that we can do some traffic calming. My question is, if we think that we might need to do more there, I presume all those measures would cost money. So if the trail will be complete across there in 2024, should we, my question is, and I'm going to make a motion, should we not amend the budget to appropriate something like $75,000 to anticipate the improvements that might be necessary to make that intersection safe for kids to get across, whether it's rapid flash beacon or, or, you know, so I guess being proactive, should we do that? Doug has said, well, we could do that as a supplemental, but again, I'd rather anticipate, studying the problem, find a solution, and then have money available so that the safety improvement could, could happen at the same time at the trail and not like, well, let's have the trail first and then figure out. So, so I will, you know, having asked this question and proposed this back in June, like I would make a motion that we amend the budget to increase funding, and I don't know whether it's in community development or where you think it would best go, Doug, I would defer to you. I pick a number like 75,000 because that's what it would cost to do something like a hybrid beacon, but if it's not a hybrid beacon, you know, whether it's traffic calming or additional signage, and if we don't need to spend it, it could return back to the budget. I guess I make a motion that we think proactively and do it now. That's-
Okay, is there a second to Dave's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so we'll have discussion now on the amendment. Any concerns or comments?
I was just-
Can we hear from the city?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Well, I mean, one place is to up the appropriation in the Oates Fund. I mean, we don't know what we want to do there yet, so I have no idea what the cost would be, and since we're not quite sure what we're going to do, and we've committed to do something, you know, it's, it's just a wag, you know, wild guess. And, you know, if we take it out of the general fund, I mean, if it's eligible to be spent out of the Oates Fund, it seems to make sense to me to do that rather than out of the general fund. So I guess that's council's pleasure, whether it's general fund or Oates Fund.
Okay, Dave, are you-
Yeah, I mean, that's the logical thing. When, when we had talked about doing an Oxford Area Trail crossing there, I presumed that would be an improvement that would be part of the Oxford Area Trail fund, you know, budget for that project. Again, I don't want to engineer the thing, but I think anecdotally, we know that what's currently there is not sufficient, and with increasing traffic across there will be even more insufficient. So again, I, maybe the improvements wouldn't cost any money, but I'm presuming any improvements that we would make in 2024 would cost money. So I am making a wild guess. I, 75,000 is what the hybrid pedestrian beacon would cost. Again, I, I don't know whether it's better to budget zero and then have to come back in later, or to budget the money now on the assumption we can figure out how best to improve the intersection. But I think from the trail fund is the logical place where that should come from.
Okay. Amber?
So my question is, if it ends up costing more than the 75,000, what's the-
Do we have to do a supplemental?
Then you do a supplemental at that point.
Yeah, if we still want to do it, it's a supplemental, then, of course. We're limited by what you budget. That's one reason why we didn't come up with a figure, you know.
So David, to you, what would be, let's say it costs more than the 75,000, what comfort would it give you to assign the 75,000 now if we have to do a supplemental budget later?
I, I guess I'm just thinking proactively, if we anticipate there will be some costs to improve the trail crossing, we should budget for them now and anticipate them. And if we find out that what we propose costs less or costs more, we can make an addition then. I mean, I don't know what, I mean, I guess what I would say is that I had kind of hoped and assumed when we were planning the trail that there would be improvements built into it. They were not. We've identified them as something we would like to do. I think it's going to take some analysis and engineering to figure out what the right solution is, but I feel like having the money set aside means that when that engineering solution is determined, you know, the money's been budgeted. But again, I've just picked a number that was based on what I believe to be the average cost for the pedestrian beacon, but the other solutions are things that city staff is looking at, so I don't know what dollar figures are associated there.
Thanks, Dave.
Dave, I agree with what you're saying regarding the intent of the budgeting, but I don't think it's appropriate for this particular appropriation due to the fact that the city doesn't know what's going on, they haven't done any analysis, they didn't, like, we heard the request, and we acknowledged the request, and they said they're going to do research about it. And I believe that the city staff will follow through with this. I feel like the proposal that you have made is an implicit lack of trust on the city's behalf to put in the appropriate thing and spend the money. So when you do stuff like that, at least for me, it just seems like you don't trust the city to do the right thing and then spend the money when it needs to be spent. All I'm saying is it's a little too soon, and I would give the city a bit more trust that they're going to do it.
I would just comment that I share Dave's concern that this be a safe crossing. It's not safe now. I was at that intersection recently, the beacons were going, the kids were ready to go across the street, and some car just came flying right through and didn't even slow down, even though the beacons were flashing. So I know that it's a dangerous intersection, there will be more, but I agree with Glenn, and I think that the staff has indicated that they understand that it's a problem and they'll take care of it. So I don't want my no vote to be misunderstood because I agree with your point. I just think that we're probably going to have to do a supplemental anyway, so we should just wait. That's just my preference.
Yeah, like personally, I think that this is going to be a programmable, like an actual stoplight that's programmable to the yellow flashing light, and then they press a button and forces people to stop. That's going to be way more than 75, right?
Probably.
And that's what I mean by that, is like, they're going to do the research. That's me throwing out the wild-ass guess that they're talking about. But when we get to that point, what I mean by we is the city of Oxford, they're going to say, this is what we have decided is going to be the safest thing for that particular intersection and the kids that are going to be utilizing that, we're going to appropriate this much money, and everyone's going to say yes, and that'll be that.
I think there's consensus, at least, that that intersection-
I, you know, however it happens, I don't really, I mean, whether we do it tonight or whether it's done a supplemental, I just want that when the trail-
Not be forgotten.
When the trail opens, I want that safety improvement to be in place.
Yep.
And I'm presuming that trail will be opening and that crossing in 2024.
Yep.
So this is it, and if the improvement's going to take planning and money, I would, I would assume one would-
I understand.
Budget for it. That's, that's my proposed case.
Everybody understand what the motion is to amend, to put a figure in there?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, now I need hands. So those were, those who are in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. Four, okay. So the amendment is passed, so there'll be $75,000 added to the Oates Trail line item of the budget. Are there any other amendments or discussion?
No, and I want to thank staff for addressing some of the other increase in the urban forestry, as well as the other things we've asked for, as well as some of the requests that have come in, that there's been flexibility in the budget, and I appreciate Doug's efforts to find room in the budget for stuff.
Okay, you may call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr., Mr. Prether?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to the next one, number six, I believe.
An ordinance outlining budgeted advances for the City of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Heidi?
There are no changes to the budgeted advances from the first reading.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address budgeted advances? Okay, counselors, any questions, comments, concerns? Call the roll.
Mr. Prether?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to number seven.
An ordinance outlining budgeted transfers for the City of Oxford, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi?
There are no changes, again, from the first ordinance for the budgeted transfers.
Okay. Thank you very much. So this is transfers. Anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors, any questions, concerns? Seeing none, you may call the roll.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prether?
Yes.
Ms. Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to number eight.
An ordinance to adopt fees and charges for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi, any changes?
There are no changes.
Okay. We had a robust discussion of this last time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, any counselor comments or questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Regu?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Oh, yes. The ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to final number nine.
An ordinance establishing salaries and certain benefits for salaried and hourly full-time and part-time employees within the service of the city of Oxford, Ohio, paid from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi, I don't know, this time it's you.
Yeah. One tiny edit, and that is for the part-time staff who are in the non-sworn police division, in the fire division, we made their part-time salary ranges mirror the collective bargaining agreements. And so it was just a minor adjustment.
Okay, thank you very much, Jessica. Appreciate it. Anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors?
Could I just, I, I can't remember whether you presented all this wage and study in work session or in the regular general meeting. But I just want to, again, commend the city for, you know, I would contrast what Councilor Ellerby was saying. It's like, no, I actually really do value our staff and what they say. I mean, I have a council, I have opinions too, want to contribute to the process. But the city is run by staff, and I'm so happy that this wage analysis went through to make sure that we're paying staff fairly. You know, not only, like, the basic goal that we have a living wage for all city of Oxford staffers, no matter what their rank is, that we have, you know, we've eliminated disparities among ranks. And, and, you know, as a person at Miami, who Miami's still not giving us our raises, I think this is how you show people that they're valuable. So I'm super happy to be voting for something that improves the livelihoods and pay of the people who run the city of Oxford for all of us.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Regu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted. We'll move to announcements and communication. I'll begin with City Manager Elliot.
I just have one tonight with Glenwood Energy. We received a letter last summer from Glenwood Energy regarding the Oxford Town border upgrades. A follow-up letter was received recently with estimated project cost. The estimated cost to the city are two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, sixty-one dollars. So Glenwood Energy is seeking a special rider to recover these costs. The rider is based on an annual throughput of three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-four MCF. The potential three-year special rider rate is point one-nine-six-one cents per MCF. The potential two-year special rider is point two-nine-four-two cents per MCF. Glenwood Energy will provide periodic semi-annual updates and true up with this new rider to the city. Also, Glenwood Energy is requesting adjustments to the percent-of-income payment plan, PIP, and the uncollectible expense riders, which are subject to PUCO jurisdiction and regulation, as well as the utility pipeline tax rider. So, and I'll be bringing forward an amendment to ordinance number thirty-six-eight-nine, which establishes the rates and charges rendered by Glenwood Energy for providing gas service in Oxford. And I hope to do that in December or January. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, thank you. Heidi? Casey? Happy Thanksgiving. Jeff, do you have anything? Okay. Sam? Jessica?
First, I want to say thank you to Councilor Ellerby. Thank you for your years of service to the city of Oxford. It's been a joy to work with you, and I especially enjoy the Glenisms of your napkin meth, and my favorite, when our societal issues need to be stirred up and aired out in the sunlight. I think those are some of my favorites. So thank you for those comments during your years of service. I also want to let you know that we did receive three RFPs for the Chestnut Street property, and we look forward to reviewing those with a membership from the Housing Advisory Committee. We'll be doing that very soon. I'll be sending an email out tomorrow. And then finally, I just saw a walk-in. I'd like to spend an Oxford welcome to Augusto Morales from Ecuador.
Bienvenido.
He is our exchange student from Ecuador this year, and I'm thrilled that he just walked in and cut to see me at work. So, thanks.
How lucky is he to be with the Green family? It's a good, good family to be with. Okay, Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
All right. Mr. Ellerby?
I don't normally say a whole lot of things, but when I do, I try to add value. Been doing this for the better part of a decade. This is my last one. I can't state enough how good our staff here is in Oxford and how much fun I had working with everybody. During my time on council, I got on the council because I just wanted to know more about how the city worked. So I did what every patriot would do is got involved. And the first couple of years that I did this, I adopted a tactic that a lot of people that are in the wilderness do, and that is you get into the environment that you're in, and you just listen, and you see how the environment behaves. And I did that for a good part of a year, except for the second council meeting, when there was an issue with a drum competition, and I had to use the inverse square wave theorem to disprove somebody's complaint. But you listen to, you listen, you learn, and that's what I did. And then I just added value when I saw fit. But through the eight years that I've been on, I've seen crazy amounts of change in the city. Went through a global pandemic, had to deal with a lot of societal issues. But the one thing that I tried to do was keep municipal focus and try to respect everyone as best I could while addressing the concerns and the observations that I saw and why I made the decisions that I made. Some funny things came out of that. I believe that I'm the only counselor ever to ever be called a dick in public court. What else happened? Just like-
That's memorable.
It's, it's some wild things, you know? Like, a lot of things have happened. I've had a lot of people thank me. I've had a lot of people coerce me to run again. I've had a lot of people ask me to be on certain boards and commissions and other things like that because they appreciated my objective observation to a situation and then rendering my opinion and my opinion only about a particular thing. And then communicating that at a familial level versus some sort of level where I, I assumed a position of power because of some kind of station. One of the things that I guess I've internalized is this statement of just because someone sits on a throne, they are not a leader. It only means they have an ass. And true leaders are individuals that other people look to them for direction. And that's the kind of stuff that I tried to do when I was up here. And it's been real fun. So all those people that are out there thinking, hey, I should do this kind of stuff, I will wholeheartedly recommend, put your hat in the ring, and figure it out.
Thank you, Glenn. Alex?
I have two things and then some more Glen words. So first of all, I just, I noticed that we got the email from the Chamber of Commerce requesting that we discuss the High Street Road closure. So I'm going to follow up with staff to see if that's something that we could talk about maybe at our next council meeting. And then also, a huge thank you to everybody involved with Farm and Flea this weekend. I don't know if anybody got to go up there. Not that I ever underestimate city staff, because I heartily echo what has been said tonight a lot of times, is that you all are incredible at what you do. But I was like, it's going to be standard farmer's market plus a handful of booths. And it was, I mean, it was stunning. The weather was great. There were booths all the way down the park, a huge variety of vendors. There was yarn, which made me really, really happy. So it was an ability to promote and support a lot of really small businesses in addition to the amazing farmer's market that we have every Saturday. So huge congratulations to another Red Brick event that happened while students were here, and kind of like, in a different way, right? The Red Brick Fridays have been so much fun, and they're, you know, these really big evening events uptown. But to do one on a Saturday morning was also really great. So thank you to that. And to Glenn, also thank you. Not just because eight years was a really long time to serve your city, but on a personal note, I think you were one of the first couple of people that I told that I was planning to run for office, and you were never not available for questions. And you told me as honestly as anybody possibly could what I was going to be getting into. I think my favorite Glenism is it's as much a job as you make it. And I think about that every time I like add something new to my plate, where I'm like, yep, Glenn was super right. So just thank you not only for being municipally minded, but like, you think about our whole community. You think about the students, you think about businesses, you think about how Oxford as a whole can thrive. And I think, you know, we're going to miss that voice up here. So thank you for, you know, I'm starting my second year, so thank you for the mentorship, the camaraderie, and for your relentless service to the community.
My pleasure.
Chantel?
As we approach Thanksgiving, I'm always reminded by one of my favorite public school teachers, Mrs. Nealan. She was my eighth grade biology teacher. And besides science, she also invited us out to her church. She told us this story that sticks with me, that her church was having a lot of problems with vandalism, and they didn't know what to do because they had these unhoused individuals around. And so what the church ended up doing was they thought, what would Jesus do? And they started feeding them. So they opened up their doors, and they gave them food, and all the vandalism stopped. And that really was so meaningful to me. And she invited us out to her church every Thanksgiving, every Christmas to volunteer and serve food. And so I'm so excited that the senior center, hosted by TOPPS, is going to be having a community dinner free to everyone to volunteer and then open to the community. So I'm really looking forward to continuing that tradition that Mrs. Nealan instilled in me. And so I think whenever I try to make big decisions of what, if there is a person that is less fortunate than me, what is the answer? You know, like, what would, what are, what's our moral compass? Or what would Jesus do? Or whatever faith following you have. And I, I believe we would all agree the answer would be to help, and to help as much as we possibly could. So I'm so excited to be in a community that leads with their heart and follows these really important teachers all around us.
Thank you. Amber?
Yes, I want to second what Alex said about Farm and Flea. It was fantastic. And I want to thank Ashley. I saw Jessica up there, and I, and she said, it's Ashley, you know? And so I know it's a lot of staff, but really thank you to Ashley for all her hard work there. Glenn, thank you for your years of service. I remember when I was running, I met up with Glenn outside of Cofena, which is my usual hangout in the summertime. And again, he asked me one question. He's like, are you sure you want to do this? And why? You know? And so we had a great conversation. I also want to give, pay homage to the memory of Debbie Anderson. She was a woman in this community who, I knew of her emails and her messages to us, the city leaders, long before I met her. I actually met her, I've not known her in person long enough. I met her for the first time at the city of council, at the, the Chamber of Commerce dinner last, or this January, the beginning of the year. Sat at a table with her and her husband. And as soon as I saw those dimples and that huge smile, I mean, I was just captivated. And she would send these emails to city staff and leaders every week. And they were emails about leadership, and they often ended with a Bible verse. And even if you were particularly religious, it just lifted people up, you know? And I'm going to miss her. And I spent some time, I got to meet her family at a memorial service yesterday. Kuhler learned that her, she and her husband had got married there some forty-some years ago, which is why they decided to have the visitation there. So I just want, I, I'm sure on behalf of staff and council, to send just some love and support and comfort to her and her family in their time of grief and loss. And we're going to miss her.
Thank you, Amber. Jason?
Just happy Thanksgiving and safe travels for all those headed out of town to see family and friends.
Thank you. David?
All right. And so if, if I'm enthusiastic about Thanksgiving and giving thanks, it's because I was born on Thanksgiving, November 27, 1969. My mother had to pull the turkey out of the oven before she went to the hospital in Flemington, New Jersey and gave birth to me. I've always loved Thanksgiving for all the reasons. I think a lot of us like Thanksgiving. But I think giving thanks is really important because the day-to-day life is, and the decision-making is sometimes hard. Like, we're all trying to do the best job we can, and, and sometimes, like, it, you know, making change and making progress. Sometimes it's like this, sometimes it's like this. But, but incredible people in this town to work with. And so I do want to express some really gratitude, just to echo the things people have said. Farm and Flea, you know, again, it's these events that, like, so easy not to do, but if you do them, they just open up your town and inspire you about the place where you live. I try, I'm so familiar with Oxford, but sometimes there are moments where just like, if I were to come in off the street or, you know, drive into town, and this was what I saw, I think, what an amazing town. So thank you to everybody who made that event happen. I do want to express thanks to Debbie Anderson. Amber really echoed my sentiments. I got to know her through the Oxford Day of Prayer Breakfast. And just a woman who just decided, she had a whole life being an art teacher and a nurse, and then she decided late in life that, like, it was going to be her calling to, to reach out and raise up people. And, and those messages we got late night, I mean, she knew when they were difficult meetings because she was watching them. And she sent us these emails that were meant to just lift us up, and, and what a generous thing that is. And again, it's like a single person making a decision to do something, and a scale like Oxford makes it better. I want to thank Councilor Ellerby. I've served with you for six years now. And Glenn and I don't always 100% agree on stuff, but that's what makes decisions better, when we see them from all sides. And yeah, I won't re-quote your aphorisms. But yeah, really common sensical, and I really appreciate that. Every single day, common sensical. And, and then to, you know, to staff and all the people that I work with in the city of Oxford, who, you know, A, do all the hard work, try to make the right decisions, put up with me and my pushiness sometimes, you know? Because we're all just trying to do the right thing, and how to get there, you know, it's not always easy. But again, in a town like Oxford, if you maybe make a push, you can sometimes solve a problem. So thanks to everybody for trying to make Oxford better and for being such a great place to live and raise a family. So I'll stop there.
Okay. I want to first remind people, shop Oxford first. You know, support our local businesses. They need it. So before you go to the national chains and Walmart, or go to Amazon and order something, check out what our, our local businesses have to offer because you might find something very special there. Secondly, I want to recognize Glenn. Glenn is an individual that I have appreciated pretty much from the beginning, because Glenn doesn't always have something to say. But when he does have something to say, it's because he's thought about it, and it's from the heart. And I appreciate that. And I can say that there are a number of issues over the years that I came in not knowing how I was going to vote on an issue. I was going to hear the conversation. And Glenn oftentimes convinced me and swayed my vote. And so I appreciate you, Glenn, and I think you will be missed on this council. I wish you well. And for those who are wondering, when, this is the last meeting officially for Glenn, almost, because the next meeting is Monday, next Monday, the 27th, where we will have our reorganization meeting. So we will all start off together one last time until the new council member is sworn in. And so if you are interested, tune in for that meeting. You're welcome to come, obviously. There's a lot of executive session time, but other than that, we look forward to the, the next council taking office as well. I think I have a little jet lag from visiting my son, and so I am ready to adjourn this meeting. Oh, I want to say a special thanks to you for coming. You know, AFS is awesome, and my son was in AFS and had a great experience. And sometimes you luck out, and you lucked out with a really good family. So welcome. We're glad to have you in our community. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.